This conference will now be recorded.
That's a good experience today.
All right, we'll turn the time over to Jason. Do you want to tease this up?
Sure, I won't spend much time, but really, this is Levi and Dean's show, so we just wanted to sort of frame the discussion. Nothing like recommendations, not enter decisions by any shot, but just sort of giving you background about where we ended up with fund balances in 23, and then kind of where we are year to date in the current fiscal year, and then sort of start framing the future year, just providing a lot of information. But yeah, I think Dean and Levi will cover all the details here, so I'll turn it over to them.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Well, tardily, we're at this again already.
It seems like we just finished.
Did we just leave this room?
Yes.
We did. It's the most exciting time of the year for budgets, so thanks for being here.
This is April 15th.
Yeah, oh, you're right. And as Jason mentioned, we're early in the process this year, maybe a little earlier than last year even. And we don't anticipate any kind of decisions, any kind of direction necessarily. We want to kind of give you some things to think about as we go into the budget, things to think about of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So we have a schedule, and I think I gave everyone a copy of that schedule. And so this is kind of what we've outlined, and if some of these dates don't work, we'd like to know about that. But we'd like to do something a little different this year, and the first two or three meetings, we want to maybe have some focus meetings, so we focus on single issues rather than try to tackle too much one time. And I know you've talked about the one meeting on February 2nd, and that's, I believe, a Friday morning. We think, you know, a couple hours, if you can break away for a couple hours, we'd like to talk about capital projects and infrastructure related to public works. So that would be the streets, it would be water systems, storm drain systems, anything public works related. And then on March 1st, I think it's another Friday, talk about buildings and improvements. And we'll invite Cole primarily because he's our building supervisor, building director, and then others we may have come in. For example, when we talk about the fire station, we probably have the chief there as well. And then on March 29th, focus on capital and infrastructure for the power department. We're thinking, just to let you know, now that on March 29th, we'd probably like to have a discussion on power rates as well. And we'll kind of address where we think we're headed with power rates, and probably not anything to talk about until then. So those are preliminary meetings with the council, and then on March 5th is when we really kick it off to the departments. We'll give the departments their budget packet, and they'll have three or four weeks to fill out that packet.
I didn't see it.
Thanks, Melinda.
I was worried about your hydration.
It's pretty sweaty moving, right?
Yeah. And then March 25th, we'll receive those packets back, and then we'll start massage-ing the data and putting the budget together. And then several work sessions we still need to kind of plan, and we can do that now, or we can do that maybe at the end of the meeting, or however you want to move forward. But we anticipate, you know, one budget retreat for sure, probably, you know, three, four, or five hours for budget retreat. And then we've got some drop dead dates. May 16th, we need to adopt a tentative budget. And even after the tentative budget, we've got time to do some things, work on it. And then probably a public hearing on June 6th, and June 20th, either adoption of the final budget or treatment taxation in August, similar to what we had last year. So that's kind of our schedule. We'd like to follow if that seems to work over the next several months. As far as today goes, we'd like to look at 2000.
Actually, Dean, before we jump on, do you want to pencil in those to be determined dates for the work sessions? Next work sessions, not the capital ones, but the next budget work sessions in April. I think we were looking at possibly, like, we could either do it before the council meetings in April, like this, like started, well, we probably have to start earlier than 4:30 just because there's so much to talk about. Would the Fridays after the April council meetings be open for people, like April 12th and 26th at 8:00 a.m.?
Typically, Fridays work good for me. Usually a slower day.
I know the first three Fridays you have are off Fridays for me, so that works well. I don't have to take vacation.
It's on the week. Then usually in April or is that a different month?
It is on the 17th through the 19th.
Oh, yeah.
It's like conference. That's in St. George.
Yep.
Oh, that's the St. George one?
Nope.
Just after one day, just all sit together for another four hours.
What are we planning on, Ed, for the council meeting that month? Are we?
Council meeting will be held on the 11th, and that will be the only meeting you have that month.
Okay.
In April.
Because spring breaks the first week.
What if we penciled in, like, Friday, April 12th, that morning for the first budget work session, then with Friday the 26th, or sorry, that's the week of the conference, the 26th?
No, it's the 17th.
17th, sorry. So would the 26th work? Is Friday the 26th the second budget workshop?
Works for me.
I think so.
Yeah.
All right, we'll pencil those two dates.
The 12th and then the 26th.
12th and the 26th, both Friday morning.
Or separate.
Yep.
That's one table, right?
Correct. Great, thanks.
How many hours are we thinking?
Ah.
I think the first one, probably eight to 12. I think we're going to be able to knock off, knock out some of these things when we start talking about capital and stuff early on. A lot of those things will be already brought up and discussed.
Rehash, just because that's what we do.
We're not earning our money unless we're rehashing.
Yeah.
We're being thorough.
Because no horse is too dead to be.
That's a great point.
Did you guys know that this is on in the?
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's like super loud, so yeah, so it like came walking through the hallway, went, where? I noticed that, too.
I go, I go, I go.
Nice, I get to sit next to our future commissioner. How's that going, huh?
It's a daunting task.
Yeah.
Okay, John, we added April 12th and April 26th.
Oh, good.
As work sessions, they're Fridays.
It's great, extra days.
Oh, I don't know if it's been said, but we obviously have pizza and treats and waters here on the floor, but there's also cold sodas in the fridge, the break room, so please.
Okay. Does it send out a calendar invite for that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to kind of give you.
Okay, so today, our plan is to look at fiscal year '23, financial review, looking at the financial position, financial operations. Some brief discussion on '24, and just an introduction of '25, and then maybe ask for some input from the council as we talk about budgets. Okay, we know two weeks ago, the auditor presented the audit report, and I'm sorry, even for me, it was a complete bore. Even for guys, because this is such a beautiful thing. It is, it's a beautiful thing, and we love this, and there's so much good information here. And so we want to take a few minutes and talk about those things. I think sometimes we lose track of what an audit really is. We sometimes think, well, it's just compliance, you know, are they checking the right boxes? And certainly, that's part of the audit, but from the two of us that deal with it all the time, you know, that's just such a small part of it. What really is valuable, to be honest with you, is to verify what we're representing is accurate. You know, what we're saying about fund balances is accurate, what we're saying about expenses and revenue, you know, all those things are accurate. So that's the real value of this annual report. So we're going to look at maybe some pages here. Levi's provided highlighters, so I'm going to highlight as we go.
Nice.
You know it so well.
You're real neat.
So let's go to page 33.
In the book here.
This is well done. This takes a lot of effort.
Oh, it's huge.
I'll try to throw it up on the screen.
You need to, like, a road reminder?
Yeah, I need it. Sometimes it's hard to see on the screen, so you can, you know, those manuals.
What, you're going to steal all the reminders since 13?
So immediately, when you think about governmental accounting, it's unique because there are funds. And each fund has a specific purpose, and with those funds, there are restrictions back and forth. And so it's almost like you've got one big pot of money, but you've also got several checking accounts. And so you have to use each one of those checking accounts and make sure it all fits together. So one of the first indicators we look at is where is fund balance for your governmental funds? So on page 33, it's okay if I stand up on these things. We have the government fund, or I'm sorry, the general fund, we have capital projects fund, we have what we call special revenue funds, which are redevelopment, the MBA, the ramp, the road, because there are special revenues that come into those funds. So the real indicators down here, when you look at fund balances on the report, and the bottom line to look at is what is unassigned? Meaning that you don't have any real commitment to the money. It could be used for almost any governmental purpose. And that's the number we always talk about, what's your any day fund? And $7.3 billion in the general fund, and that is, we talk a lot about what's the percentage that you can have? 35%? That's about right on 35%. So healthy, healthy numbers. And then you look at the capital projects fund, and this is a little bit misleading because it's assigned to capital projects, but you have some discretion on which capital projects you want to spend the money on. So you've got a balance there for future capital projects, about 1.4. And then you've got some restricted money that can only be spent in certain capital project areas, like park impact fees. You've got a million or two there that has to be spent on parks, capital. And then you go along, you know, there's redevelopment agency, you've got money tied up for redevelopment purposes. So you start talking about Main Street improvements or other improvements, you've got pocket money there.
Dean, clarification real quick. So the capital projects fund, 1.3 million, is that basically, is that already allocated, or is that just there for us to use as we need it, or?
It's assigned to capital projects but not assigned to any particular project already.
How does it get into capital projects? Where does it come from?
A couple years ago, when we were approaching this 35%, though it was 25% of the time, we transferred money from the general fund to the capital projects fund. So that's one way of getting money. Other way is through impact fee collection.
How much does that grow?
The impact fees?
Or just that balance?
Well, I mean, impact fees will grow based on the number of permits. We'll be, which took down. This only really will grow as you allocate money from the general fund to the capital projects fund.
There's a little bit of impact fees.
There is some interest that goes in there, but there's no main revenue stream that hits that fund unless you transfer money. So like the road impact fee would not go in? No, there's a separate road fund, so there's a separate retirement from that road.
So the only way that money gets into there is most, well, not the only way, but the primary method is if we transfer money in. So when we end up, our balance grows too much on the general fund, we're able to redistribute.
It's either by allocation or by impact fees dedicated to it.
Impact fees, how high, if you're looking at percentage of those funds, you know, not that much, you know, 30%? 50? I mean, can?
Of the total balance?
Of the total, when you start going into those funds, you know, from impact fees, or can you, do you have an idea?
Well, there's the, are you asking what's the percentage of the total balance relates to impact?
Oh, okay, so I see the fire impact fees of, okay, never mind.
So for example, every time the city issues a building permit, we collect a park impact fee.
Yes.
And they're like $4,600 per residential dwelling. So every $4,600 we get, we put it in here.
But is there a percentage of that that goes into that one? It's part of it. So if you go all the way down, the total's 32, so that 13 is just separate.
Okay, so the 13 is what we moved, no, Wes, that's my, the 13 is what we moved from the general fund, not the actual park impact fee. I misunderstood.
I misunderstood that, too.
Park impact goes directly into that fund.
Okay, and so it's 100% comes from those impact fees? Now, I, can you probably explain?
And Swetan, Mike, Rose Fund is here. We don't have a huge balance left on road impact fees.
Just because you're talking impact fees, why is like not the water impact?
Well, they'd be on enterprise.
On enterprise.
So these are governmental funds. So we've spent quite a bit of road impact fees.
It's called a lazy Susan, no, a roundabout.
We don't know what those are.
So the, but the 1188, that's an accumulation, right? That's not just this year. So Josh isn't, I mean, Josh doesn't look at that, I mean, Cole, Cole isn't looking at that, saying, what am I going to do this year? He's trying to kind of get it built up so that he can actually do the park on 200 North, you know, 200 North or something like that, right?
Yeah, the audit report looks at position, and then it looks at operations, and we can see what we've collected in impact fees in terms of operations. So those are the governmental funds overall, pretty healthy fund balances.
Yeah.
Good positive news.
You see that now, but you won't later.
I know, there are lots of places to spend it.
The fund balance on the road line is, it looks like a lot, $10 million, seems like a big fund balance, but I think, what, $6 million of that is tied up into the connector road, so it's not quite as big as you might think.
So once that's complete, then?
Yeah, then obviously.
Because we get, I get asked that from residents, like, can we pay this road tax or businesses? And we're not seeing a lot of improvement in our roads, so.
Okay, so that's part of the governmental funds, fund balance. Now, if you can jump clear to page 95.
Sweet.
So I mean, we're not coming back to the rest of the pages?
Where are you hiding from?
There are a couple of funds which are called, it's weird, you know, that are called non-major. And there's a certain calculation you go through, you kind of look at major and non-major, so we just.
They're smaller dollar amounts than the.
We just lump it all together.
You have non-major today.
So you've got, you've got debt service, that's paying primarily for fire truck and some other, there are small things. So you've got a little bit there. Here's, here's one thing that is probably a once-in-a-lifetime deal, that's the ARPA monies. And we, as you know, have spent a lot of that for our fiber project. But we think even when the fiber project is said and done, you're going to have another million, five million, eight left.
To clarify, not the fiber project for the residents, this is the fiber project for the city.
The cities do that, correct?
And we, that money for the ARPA funds has to be used for braggad, right? So we can't just move that money.
No, they've broadened that definition. They've, they're such that you can use it for, for water system improvements.
Oh, okay. Infrastructure now.
You can use it for, you know, storm drain, you can use it for low-income housing, they've really broadened that.
They established a $10 million threshold, and they kind of just said, if you're under that amount, please spend it.
If we have a healthy amount on Delmar, I wonder if we should look at the, all the meters that they're putting on the homes that the state's mandating? Because it's going to cost a lot of money and.
Those are the kind of decisions you can make. The kicker with ARPA is we have to.
Done some pizza?
We have to obligate that money before the end of '24, calendar year '24. So you've got a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take about a million and a half and obligate that to a project.
So we can put it into some structural, long-term, sort of permanent, okay?
Just a quick, so this is how much we were given in ARPA funds, and the remainder is 1.5, or do we still have that?
Actually, we still have.
We still have that much in the ARPA funds?
But we're still paying out for the city-owned fiber project, so that's why it's very limited.
That's maybe 25% of this. And again, that number is through June 30, 2023, so nothing spent after that is included in that.
I mean, that number's already been reduced with the payments we've made to fiber.
So after June 30th?
But we'll still, after.
It's the last six months what we've spent.
After we made all our payments for that project, we're still going to have about a million and a half left.
You think there'll still be 25% of it left, not 75% of it?
I don't know about percentage, but about a million and a half.
And the designation for, I mean, it could be a park, right?
Right.
I don't think park was going to be a park.
Our water and infrastructure needs updating now.
Has to be infrastructure.
Places we can use it.
You know, possibly road, but if you're doing a water line underneath the road.
Really, we got a million, we got about a million and a half dollars a week. Need to figure out where it's going to go, and that's where you get to work with your department heads, and then prioritize, and then we'll.
So when we start talking about those capital items with the three, the departments, the next three meetings.
We'll have a better, we'll have a better idea of what their highest priorities are.
And then we've got some, you know, some cemetery perpetual care. We collect a perpetual care fee for the ongoing maintenance of the cemetery. That's, we can't spend that, but we can spend that. And the same thing with library endowment, we can't spend that, but we can spend that.
Just a quick question. So when you say we can spend this, we can't spend, that money is already obligated though, right? For the cemetery, for example, 500 and?
That is an endowment, so the boardless, the principal has to stay.
Right, there, okay, but the 500 and?
And the same thing, library endowment, it was a gift.
So we can't actually spend, it has to be, just to clarify.
But it's what's over the, what's over the endowment, which is the 600,000 and 35,000.
And we collect interest on that 692, which in turn adds to the amount. So what we do is we, of all the interest, we put 10% back into the endowment to keep up, and then we, you decide how the county wants to spend it in the library.
Bloods, right. So as far as that 598, is that, is that just going to sit there to determine whether or not the cemetery eventually needs it, or?
Well, this one will always sit here. This one can be spent now. We're spending part of this over the last several years for the defensive improvements.
Okay.
Around the cemetery.
But it needs to be spent at the cemetery.
Right, yeah.
Does the cemetery perpetual care go towards the ongoing costs of like having like a, like the employees that work there? Or is that from a separate, is this just for like capital type?
No, it could be operating, it can be operating. So at some point, you can say, you know, when you're out of the cemetery business, you've got this limited interest in order to pay some of your operating costs.
We do have a cemetery department in the general fund, and a lot of the personnel and other costs come out of the general fund. And then, like Dean said, the law we did, we took out of those money, so, but I think you could.
So, yeah, and this is more for our education and the priorities, we will talk down the road, so don't waste, don't waste that time today.
Yeah, we're just trying to give you label land.
That's for our benefit, not yours.
Okay, so that's governmental funds. Now, if we could look at enterprise fund, we go to page 37. And this is when you have to put on a different accounting hat, because governmental funds are accounted for in one way, enterprise funds are accounted for in a different way. You use business-type accounting for enterprise, so you have depreciation and capitalization and all those things you would typically have in a.
Some of the terminology is just a little different.
Say expenses instead of expenditures.
It's a statement of net position, it's a balance sheet, it's, it's.
It's a little funky.
Net position instead of fund balance.
So essentially, they're interchangeable, though. Instead of, instead of fund balance, we're going to call it net position for enterprise funds. So you can see the net position for your power, water department, power department, storm drain, events, non-major. So as far as net position, again, some pretty healthy, healthy numbers. So in unrestricted, you've got about 2.5 million unrestricted in water, it can be used for future budgets. We've got about $8 million in power, 1.8 in storm, you know, we'll look at the others during that. But on this line, you've also got your restricted, it falls within the net position category. So you've got $1.3 million restricted for water projects, and $2.7 million restricted for power projects. And most of this, we've already discussed and talked about how we're going to spend that. That's with the two major substation upgrades that we're.
Question, though, that was in last year's budget, so should they have already been purchased?
No. It goes over several years, so part of it was spent.
I, yeah, it's kind of, there was some engineering cost spent. I do think one of them comes out of this year's budget. Yeah, because we approved last year in last year's budget.
But that's where.
A part of that, well, this should be the net position, so it should have been spent.
No, because this was what was approved to be spent this year, wasn't it?
This is what is left as of June 30th, 2023.
Six months ago.
Six months ago.
Yeah.
So this may have already gone down, that are in '24, yeah, this would be looking back six months.
So we purchased those transformers.
Some we have, but we also collected some new impact fees.
One of them was a million dollars I don't remember by, so.
Okay, but still pretty healthy, and our target number here is probably a little less than our target number for power. That's still a pretty good amount. Let's, let's look at the other non-major, so that would be page 96. No, I'm sorry, page 102.
102.
102, 96.
Yeah, I was, I was excited, I was there. 102 is my favorite. Honestly, that pizza is so hot, like, my mouth is burning.
Is it icy hot or just?
Spicy.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Lots of water. Is it in the buffalo?
Must be, I don't know, there's got something. I thought it was like marinara sauce, I'm like, lift it.
These are, these are separate funds, sewer, pressurization, sanitation. And we have not a lot of say in these, or we have say, but most of it is contract. These are, these are separate funds, sewer, pressurization, sanitation, and we have not a lot of say in, in these, or we have say, but most of it is, is contract. I mean, we collect money from the sewer district, and we transfer it to the sewer district, we do the same with pressurization, sanitation, we have, you know, a contract caller and many goes to, what's it integrated? But, but nonetheless, still pretty, pretty good fund balance.
So Dean, for most years, I mean, you've been doing this a lot of years, better, average, worst of all, I mean.
We try to continue to be healthy every year, so you could go in the statistical section at the end, like page one oh. They do that.
Is it one twenty?
One twelve?
Can I ask a quick question before you move this off this page? Just because, and, and I'm going to the unrestricted portion, and what I'm asking is, so this is a pass-through. But is the unrestricted portion the part that we retain here? This is an unrestricted going to the sewer district, this is unrestricted retained that case, it's like, thank you.
Correct. To answer your question.
I'm, I'm able to see it on one twelve.
You can see the fund balances?
Yeah.
From year to year? Okay, so if you look at the, the general fund, last year is seven four, year before that, five five, five seven.
Yeah, and ten years ago at two three, so. Okay, so that, that, that helps a lot, I appreciate that.
When, uh, Dean, sorry, are we asking too many questions? On the ninety, on the, in with the, you were talking about the, like, forty-five hundred dollars per part fee for every business, every house, right?
Every new building program.
I, like, just thinking about the governor's initiative and all of our initiative to having built smaller houses, I mean, more affordable houses, is there, is there ever any thoughts on those types of things being negotiable? Like saying, hey, as long as you're building a home that's under a certain amount, we'll.
So can we reduce the impact fees?
Yeah, we, we reduce impact, I don't know what the legal ramifications are on it, but I'm just thinking, like, if they do come to us and ask, like, or proposals on how we can help, I just wonder, that's an area where we're pretty healthy. That we could, and, and I don't think that we're gonna get a lot of, I mean, I don't think it's gonna prevent, I don't think it's gonna cause developers to like run out and do it, but like having things that we could provide, you know, say, oh, your impact fees only thousand.
To charge the impact fee, you have to prepare a capital facilities plan of what your needs are in part reorganization, and then you assign a cost to, to the new development. So you say, well, good development comes in, they're gonna have this much impact on our existing system. I guess as you did that study, you could say, if we're bringing in affordable housing, you may have a smaller household size. So you potentially could make a reduction in that fee based on.
For, for that development, for that specific development, okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just think it's an option, I just.
But, but I was, so the state's gonna work, is working on deed restrictions.
Yeah.
So that the city doesn't have to contribute to that, that development reduction. So that the developers are coming in saying, okay, the city's saying, yeah, we give you permission to go ahead and build smaller homes there, and that's the city contribution.
Okay.
And then we deed restrict some of those lots so that the developer then has to, you know, build smaller footprints, smaller square footage.
Kind of does.
Just so that the, the pressure isn't on the cities to supplement, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a good idea, I mean, I, I like the suggestion, it's just that I'm hoping that the state comes forward and will provide some teeth to it. So that cities aren't asked to, to basically subsidize.
But the deep route, anyway, this will be the topic, I guess, on the deed restrictions and how often they're gonna actually.
Yeah, but, but you're right.
Come with those, you know what I mean, like, we can restrict it, but if they don't bring a proposal, they don't, they're not forced to build it, just because we've restricted it, right?
But if they wanna build.
It's an option for us, right?
Is this a squirrel moment?
It's a squirrel, sorry, squirrel, okay.
I was just saying.
Okay, let's go to page sixty-five.
Sixty-five, sixty-five.
Yeah, this is the last page, we'll talk about in regards to where does the city stand financially. And the best thing to look at is not only where we are today, but what kind of obligations are we committed to down the road. So you can see, right here, the governmental activities, we're still committed to a revenue bond that we issued for Pioneer Park. After fiscal year, after the current year, we'll have one more year, now we'll, we'll drop off.
So it'll be out during the next year.
Twenty-five will drop off. We still have lease revenue bonds for the police station and for the city hall, and they won't drop off for several years. I think two thousand thirty-one and two thousand thirty-four.
We refinanced the police station, and that's why that's a later date.
So this is the balance as of end of twenty-three, that's the amount that's due in twenty-four. So if you want to know what the balance is at the end of twenty-four, reduce that number by. And then we have a few long-term liabilities, we have the fire truck that we're still paying on, another year and a half left there. The, the white area mower and the ambulance will be truly paid off this year, so.
Is that the fire truck we received or yet to receive?
Yet to receive, we paid cash for that one, so that one doesn't show up here, that's one that we're. So at the end of twenty-four, you'll, you'll still have a little bit left on sales tax, you'll have the two buildings. And you'll have just a little bit left on the fire truck, as far as debt. The, the remarkable thing of this whole page is, when you look at business-type activities, you essentially don't have any, any debt. You don't have any water bonds, power bonds, anything like that. So I, I think that's gonna be part of the discussion as we look at infrastructure.
Do we know?
Maybe it's time to do some money, even though interest rates are miserable, not that they were here, but.
You can rebuy it, it'll go down.
Yeah, so, anyway, so that, we've talked about fund balances, we've talked about net position, and we've talked about how long-term debt. That has to do with our, our position. Now, the other thing the auto report does for us is looks at, well, how did you do in just one year, how did you do for, for your twenty-three? So if we'll go to page thirty-five. So you look at the general fund, you say, okay, here, here are all the revenue, oh, sorry. Here's all the revenue sources that came in for the general fund, about twenty million in revenue, and here's the expenditures that went out. And with that, we have pretty good capital outlay. And with that, with that capital, we, we're six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars efficiency revenues over expenditures, which is what we anticipated because we did budget, fund balance, but we budgeted quite a bit more than that for fund balance. Yeah, so you can see, you know, when it all works out, you can see what we started with on fund balance and what we ended up with. So about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars deduction in fund balance, which is, which is a good number.
Right.
Especially when we had that kind of capital contribution. And, and you can see the other funds as well, you can see capital.
But I think one thing to point out, like Dean says, is we budgeted quite a bit more than that, anticipating dipping more into fund balance. And so luckily, you know, some of the revenues were more, and also expenditures were, were less than our budgets.
In fact, I.
Well, that's great that we're back, it's great that we're back to, sorry, mayor, but it's great that we're back to the thirty-five percent. Because, especially after having paid from the fund balance for the year that we didn't do the truth and taxation, like, it's pretty awesome that.
Brought it back, so I'm gonna maybe go a different direction, let's go to page eighty-three.
Just a quick question, though, just because I know, so we collected twenty thousand, one twenty million, and we spent twenty-one more. And we were in the hole, six hundred and sixty-two thousand that we had to transfer out of fund balance to cover.
But we budgeted how much to do?
But we budgeted more, so, so it actually only.
Just don't show that on this.
It only came up to three hundred and fifty-one, actually, instead of.
He was considering the year.
No, it was good, like, we budgeted beyond a whole bit more than that.
So here, here's, here's what we budgeted for fiscal year twenty-three. So you can see, this is just general fund, okay? See, see, original budget, if we made any.
Eighty-three.
We made any, any kind of amendments, and then what the actual amounts were. So you can see on taxes, a little bit more revenue. And it came a little bit more in sales tax and. Even energy tax, so as Dominion Energy raised their rates, we take a cut of their six percent, and that helps. So if, if you can go down that whole category, you can see in most cases, revenue was higher than, than budgeted.
Where, where did you budget? Where are the amounts that we budgeted? Oh, budgeted amounts, okay.
So, yeah, there's original and final, really the only, the only difference there is, if you remember, toward the end of the year, we do a budget amendment for certain items where we're gonna go over budget, and so the final budget, final column is what the end numbers were.
And then the actual, because even then, we're sort of guessing.
Right, that's, the budget's just a guess, and then this is where it ended up, so you can see the difference there.
What are court fees and fines that we were eighty-one thousand dollars higher than what we budgeted, what was that?
So.
Who's still getting tickets?
So when you think of fund balance, when you increase your fund balance, either have more revenues than you think, or you have fewer expenditures. So if you can go down, we'll look at expenditures.
So this is all revenues.
Hey, real quick on that, I guess, the court finds they, they are going up, there's a trend, I think it's not just us, it's all over the country. I don't know if it's post-COVID or what it is, but there's, it's kind of returning to, I think, where we used to be, isn't that?
Less, less tickets were given because the people kind of felt like.
I mean, I think, I don't know what the reasons were, but just fewer, fewer citations during.
Police pull over and you go, ah, ah.
Anyway, this is a side note, that, that the PA, the prosecuting attorney position just being overwhelmed with all the court fines, so. Trying to figure out a way to address that.
Page eighty-four, so here you see the expenditures, so again, increased fund balance, either more revenues or fewer expenditures, and almost in every case, responsible, responsibility areas didn't spend their entire budget. And I think sometimes we, we think that local government is a lot like the federal government, that the departments are gonna spend every dime you give them. That hasn't been my experience, my experience is, the police, we gave them what they needed, I think, Dubya is the counsel, but they were able to turn back two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for budget. So we talk about efficiencies in government, you know, we have departments that are, I, I think are pretty conscientious of the funds they have, and. And aren't afraid of turning some back, I, I think the problem, the concern I'd have is, well, we go back to chief and say, well, you turned back two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, we're gonna cut your budget by two hundred and forty-eight. That's not, not the best approach, the best approach is, give me what you need, and then you do what you can.
Yeah.
Responsible of it.
Yeah, that's the greatest.
So how come the fund balance at the end of the year on this one, oh, because that's the budget, not, is the other one, I mean, kind of my comment to Mike was, when we see this variance of fifteen, one point five million, makes me think, well, maybe we didn't need to do this truth and taxation to cover that eight hundred grand. I'm talking about page eighty-three.
But this is twenty-three, not twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
And this is.
Good point, good point.
This is that same number with, with three hundred and fifty-one.
I got you, no, that makes sense, and, and I, I see what you're saying, we're reviewing.
So there is one, one accounting quirk that we're gonna fix, is you can see over just here on non-reciprocal utility payments. What that is, that's an accounting requirement where we have to say, okay, how much, how much enterprise services did the recreation department use? So this number here would be like the lighting at Barnes Park, or the water services at Barnes Park, and so we're gonna do a better job of making sure that includes in the budget.
Yeah.
So there was the one finding, and that finding is related to this, remember that? It wasn't Cole's fault, it was our fault, because we didn't.
We didn't. Funny money, it's paid because it, yeah.
It's funny money.
Yeah.
But you still have to.
Account for it.
So overall.
It shows us a loss here, it's paid for out there. It shows us a loss here, but it's paid for out there.
Right.
Are you doing an analysis like where we did budget for, where like the police, yeah, they turned in a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar surplus, but where you're analyzing what they asked for for twenty twenty-four, does it line up closer with, to what the, what they, you know, eliminating that two twenty? Does that make sense, or?
No, it was.
It was close to what?
It was probably higher than, well, it was definitely higher than twenty-three because we did those wage increases and everything.
Yeah. Interesting.
So there, I don't think we want to spend a lot of time, but there, there is a similar sheet on every one of our funds right here. If you wanna look at how, how we did operationally, maybe let's go back and look at ramp real quick. Yeah, budget action.
So when you. There it is, it's on page eighty-seven.
So, as you know, we're, we're budgeting about three hundred thousand dollars for ramps, even though we, we know we're gonna collect about a half million, but the idea is that each year, we're gonna, we're gonna set aside some money to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars, so when the junior high gymnasium comes up, we at least have something.
Yeah, that's good.
We've got other, other things that we worked through like that.
Is that, I mean, is that what you want to do?
Yes.
You want to build up the ramp fund?
Cause that gymnasium is gonna cost like eight, nine.
Would that come out of ramp?
It could, yeah, because then you can, all you have to do is put a sign. And then all the schools not gonna pay, what they're talking about is like, if two, it's a school built just one gym, but we partner with them and say, hey, we pay the extra that it costs you to extend this to make two gyms, will you guys add it to your thing?
Oh, is that what we're trying to do then? And then is that so that residents can have access to, for rec leagues?
Rec leagues, yeah.
Rec leagues.
More like junior jazz and stuff.
Yeah, for the.
Church wall.
So you can.
So that when it.
Build up a capital improvement.
It's called capital improvement.
It is a capital improvement. I didn't think you could do that.
Is there, I think that's what would happen, my, my guess is what would happen is we'd still have to go through like the ramp committee, it'd still have to get approved. So basically, like, the ramp's just like helping contribute to it.
So you would still show the ramp committee the five hundred and some thousand you collected and say, but this is what we propose.
We haven't done that yet because this last year was the very first year.
But they know about it, they've talked about it.
We told them when we, when we met, said, we're capping this at three hundred, could we just really aren't sure? And we'll see, and so we'll have those discussions.
But now that we have.
We'll have our meetings.
That committee will get the full amount that was collected, this is what it is, but this is what.
All the projects that we accepted will do.
Ramp expenditure will go through the committee.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
And and ramp won't cover all that cost.
So how is that determined to set aside money for, just to build that up? Was that you both that kind of figured that out, or was that?
That was our recommendation, but it's council, but.
Because that's, I think that's a great move.
And it's the ramp committee that looks at it first, and then makes the recommendation to us as council.
If it if it's like a use it or lose it, like if you set that restriction on yourself, then like people come in here and say, like ridiculous ideas. And you're like, okay, yes, we have to spend it versus like, well, let's wait, this doesn't really.
Build it up.
Right now, there's about a four hundred thousand dollar balance. If you go back to this fund, that's the statement we were looking at. So we've built up four hundred thousand. That'll go up another two hundred thousand probably this year, and then that's what it's costing.
Okay, we spent an hour, I think that's probably enough on twenty-three to give you a feel for.
Right, where we've been.
Where we've been. How we wanna kind of talk about where we are current year. And as you remember, when we approached twenty-four, the issues we were facing were inflationary costs were killing us, and and compensation was something we spent a lot of time on and 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 worked hard at, and we're gonna talk about those things, how they kind of shook out. So I'm gonna have Levi just, we don't have a lot of information here, we kind of talked about it really well, pretty much as.
Yeah, this is really just looking at the last six months. And so, still pretty early, but sorry, that's page five on the slides, if you're trying to find. So first, we're gonna look at some revenue trends, how different revenues have performed the last six months compared to what we expected. And then we'll look at the the power, that was a a big discussion, that will kind of show you how that's been doing. So this first slide is just the sales tax. So I give, there's a few, couple of years of of numbers here, but you can see how it's it's grown. So the highlighted numbers, we don't have yet. So those are
Projected.
Just projecting, assuming the same amount as last year. And if that, you know, if we project that out, the total there is seven point seven million. But I, you can see how we've been trending a little bit above, you know, one to two to five percent above the prior year. So hopefully that continues. And then we should be pretty close to our budgeted amount of the seven point eight five million. So I I think it's trending toward what we budgeted. So that's, that's good. Any questions on that? So that's just sales tax. These are just a few of the other governmental revenues. So we we talked about that energy sales, so uh, through six months, it's about fifty-one percent of budget, so that's good, you know, kind of trending where we would hope, maybe a little bit higher. Uh, building permits are down, so that would probably be, we budgeted six hundred thousand. That might be a couple hundred thousand less than what we we thought it would be.
This is three months, four months of data?
Six months.
Oh, even though you just don't have these these last.
Oh, sorry, for sales tax, yeah.
But 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 for these other numbers, it's six months.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Why do you expect building permits? Why are those down?
Yeah, you can see in twenty-two, it was almost seven hundred thousand, and it's just kind of slowly gone down.
So, just a question. So so this is the sales tax.
Correct.
And this is basically our revenue budget, we went on page thirty-three. Is this reflected in this?
This is last year.
I know it's last year, but if let's say this was last year's sales tax revenue, is that reflected on this page somehow?
It's on your revenue one, it may be on page at page eighty-three that we looked at?
Page eighty-three.
And and even more, if you want to go to the end of the report, where we have a few years' history, you can see sales tax for the last ten years.
Okay, so in this one, that would be reflected here into our total.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we're trending where we thought, for the most part, so, good sign. This is looking at power purchases, so the cost of power has been a big coughing point. In twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we took a pretty big hit, as you know. Um, so this is just showing you comparing month to month, the last couple of years. So you can see from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, it went up four million dollars. The good news is, it's 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 kind of calmed down. So the toward the end of twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, you can see the numbers were actually lower than the prior year, and then that trend has continued over the last six months. So here's sorry, there's a lot of numbers, but if you look at this percentage trends, that's twenty-three to twenty-four, so ninety-three percent of the prior year, seventy-eight percent. So it's it's been going down, which is great.
Yeah, we want low numbers on this one. Is that correct?
So with that, why is it, mind why we budgeted only, you know, to shy of thirteen million?
Well, it's pretty, we budgeted, because that number came from a, I think that number came from a U M's projection.
Okay, twenty-four.
Okay.
And so.
The twenty-three or the twenty-four number, that thirteen-two is an extrapolation of if if we hit eighty-five percent of the prior year, we're gonna be at thirteen-two. So, things have softened, but you're not back to twenty-two levels.
It never will be.
Never will be.
And that's what this bar column is showing, you know, if we take out twenty-three as an anomaly, how does it compare to kind of what we were at before, and it's still a good, you know, twelve percent higher on average, but somewhat quite a bit. Anyway, good news, I think, it's trending down, and it's pretty close to what we budgeted, a little bit more, but hopefully uh, you know, we get surprised that it keeps trending down, so.
September, because it was like perfect weather, you didn't have to have the A C or the heat on.
So if if you remember, we did about, we did about a five percent rate increase.
Yes.
Because of the numbers we were seeing, if you go from twenty-two to twenty-four, it suggests just to pay for your power costs, it would be about a ten percent increase. So I I still think we, down the road, will need to make an adjustment.
We 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 could only, we did five, and that's all we were able to do. Could we?
That's all we agreed to do.
But with the rainy day fund, I think. Okay. I I remember the extra.
Well, yeah, if you look at the top left here, just keep in mind, that twelve point nine that we budgeted for, that was only possible because we plugged two point six million out of our fund balance.
Okay.
So if you remember, Dean was showing us the
fund balances at a million, and it was nine.
It was eight, about eight million, and so that two point six will come out of that eight million. And so it's seven point nine, eight million.
Or what were you?
Is that what you're talking about, or?
Well, I'm just saying, we had the nine million, then we took the two million out, but there was unrestricted funds in power.
We haven't taken the two million out yet, two million out of twenty-four.
Dean, question, at what point will we know, have a better idea whether or not we, I mean, well, let me back up. If we think we need to raise power, once again, the power tax, at what point in the year will we know?
Well, let me refer you back to page thirty, page thirty-three. So I just had probably enough time on this one, but if you look at page thirty-eight, you get to know my, sorry. Again, this is.
I gotta reopen it.
Enterprise accounting. So you you look at the cross lines, you see operating revenues, and you can see the total operating revenues for the water fund and electric fund. And then you can look at operating expenses. So on an operating basis, during twenty-three, you lost about one point eight million dollars.
Yeah.
So that alone says you probably need to do some kind of rate increase.
So, yeah, I think the the fund balance before was was around nine, around nine million, I believe, right? And then with with the updated numbers, it dropped to seven, seven point nine million. And then this year, we had that two point six plugged, so it's.
Yeah, so I should have spent more time on that, but that that would that would suggest a rate increase. And I think when we bring in Brian and talk about that, we'll probably.
This budget year, or another rate increase.
Twenty-five.
How much of a percentage, just right off the bat, I know it's.
Well, just to cover this, probably five percent. We talked to Brian today, and U M's saying over the next ten years, they're seeing probably increase about forty percent over ten years, as far as rejected resource costs.
Electric vehicles that don't work against coal.
All the coal plants, yeah.
Well.
Cheap clean fuel.
Just a side note that I thought was interesting. Brian was telling us earlier today how Rocky Mountain Power purchased one of the coal plants that went out, and they're gonna put small nuclear reactors in it and use the infrastructure.
Which power plant?
Where's that located?
Which if they can do is, would be awesome, but the 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 capital cost in that is astronomical.
Is that something, you've got your distribution infrastructure already there?
Yeah. Is that something they really need to have a lot of buy-in first before they? Yeah, go. Go through, run the company.
Well, they have to go through FERC and all that for Energy Regulatory Authority Commission and all. Where they don't.
It's a lot of sands, infrastructure. Get the power out of there.
Which means if their power goes down.
Probably through.
Uh, just, okay.
So as we get into to twenty-five, talked about fiscal year twenty-five, we we just, we didn't know where to put this slide, but we think it's valuable. We we can't emphasize enough how grateful we are in the council that we we took an action, I feel, with the property taxes. We we had to do something to make it worse, and we're grateful for that. But even with that, again, talking about how efficient are you, government? I think this is one of the indicators of are we efficient or not. You know, huge sales tax, huge sales tax, a lot of sales tax.
I know when you say that Prime has a huge sales tax, but I've asked that guy several times, and it's not much different than ours.
But it's going like this rather than that.
I don't know, I mean, I've asked him, because I thought I was crazy, and I've asked him several times. Where the sales tax revenue is in here, about ten percent off, that's it.
I think that was two years ago.
I asked him about it three months ago, two months ago.
Anyway. That's kind of where we are, sitting for the property tax, which.
With our raise.
That's how it all shook out, like the nine-month tax rate.
We just got our notice in the mail, and it's, yeah, it's a thousand bucks or something, out of pocket or.
Okay, so that's the misfit slide. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go to fiscal year twenty-five. Again, we'll talk about capital and infrastructure, and talk about operating, and we'll look at human resources and compensation. And again, we don't.
No decisions, we just.
Yeah, no decision, we're just kind of introducing the the budget.
So we're skipping across three different years here. We went to, the odd, it was point three last six months and point four, and now this will be the next one in a year, so.
So this next slide shows how we feel about fiscal year twenty-five, so watch closely.
Did you see the caption on that? It says, it says something like how how uh, how God feels every technique.
That's kind of how we feel about twenty-five. Here we, we're in the ditch again, so. So, we we focused on this quite a bit last year, we, as we planned for the budget, we, mission statement, we try to budget around, enhance the present and future quality of community life in Kaysville through the delivery of the effective, efficient, and equitable services. And I think that's pretty well ingrained in the department, because they kind of, you know. Josh says this ad nauseam, you know, because he really believes that. It's great. So that's kind of a different statement. Uh, we pick the budget together, from a financial perspective, we want to look at balance. We want to look at sustainable, and we want to be accountable. So there are operations, we want to manage our assets and resources for cost-effective and efficient delivery of services, and maintain the expected level of service. And that's, that's sometimes the hard one, is what is the effective level of service? We were talking to Josh about self-planning. Uh, the expected level of service is different in Kaysville than it is in Syracuse. And so we want to maintain what we think is the expected level of service. Employees, again, we're gonna mention this, we can't thank you enough for the what you helped us do with employees last year. Our most valuable resource, no doubt, in eighty percent of your budget, so. And then capital investment and then infrastructure. Uh, we we think we, they spent some time on future infrastructure, and that's why we set those meetings up. And one thing that has really helped us is the fleet maintenance, fleet replacement, is to stay ahead of that maintenance curve. You know, we're, I think we bought a vehicle four years, three years ago, turned it back and actually received more money selling it back than we did.
Was it a truck?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the kind of thing we want to, want to continue to do.
Last, I think last year, we talked about how much we're trying to get ahead of the curve, it was about in the three hundred thousand range.
For fleet?
For two hundred thousand range, that we were spending, is that?
The fleet?
Yeah.
Probably closer to six hundred.
Three, for the general fund, it was about that.
What is it this year, what do we project? Is that number coming down as the fleet is getting built up, or?
We we don't have those numbers yet, but we we think probably for the next couple of years, it will stay at the six hundred range.
That number came from like a projected replacement schedule, and it was about the same every year, just like.
And and I I think, we think that that is an absolute perfect use of fund balance.
Is it?
Let's use it and replace our fleet and you get ahead of.
Could that be slowed down at all?
A little bit slowed down, yeah, some.
Depending on, you know, twenty twenty-five, watching that.
We're trying to replace the big plow trucks, not every eight years, instead of every twenty. So, you know, we do this for eight years, and then, you know, we'll be in a pretty good cycle.
Do we sell them back to the dealer for like credits for another car, or do we sell them like via an auction?
Through the auction.
Is that for all fleet vehicles, or are the police separate?
Police, we usually, they usually trade in.
Yeah.
Okay.
The others, we sell at auction.
I I think it's a great idea to do that, and we're in a much better position now, but that has been a question of mine over the last years, whether or not we could or should slow that down or keep it the same.
I think as long as fund balance is healthy, we can use that. Let's keep at it.
I think it's really cut down on a lot of it.
You can go talk to Cody if you want.
Is there a way to?
Are there like budgeting funds that show that it's gone down? Like, in the budget, do we have like a maintenance line that's that we can see it's been going down a lot? Or is it kind of lumped together with that stuff?
We probably put something together, look at that.
It would be kind of nice to see. Just some, if it's not too much work. Just some, if it's not too much work, but just some information.
Because I'm sure anecdotally you guys see it, but it's hard for us to see.
All right, so the first thing, what we want to do here is we want to show you what what capital infrastructure we had for twenty-four, so we haven't changed any of the numbers.
Sorry if this brings a little PTSD in the bag.
So I see this graph.
All we've got is, we we've added a column in twenty-seven, and if we know there's a commitment or an obligation, we put numbers there. Twenty-four is what we're doing now.
So that ma, the twenty-four column matches what was budgeted last year and what we're currently paying. And then these are just what we had projected coming down the pipe, so we haven't changed the numbers yet, but.
But we will.
We will, they'll be discussed in the meetings coming up.
I remember that we we shifted some of the police items next year, the fire station maybe even shifting it more.
And these aren't locked in, are they?
No, no, no.
Twenty-four is the only thing that's locked in.
And just so everyone knows, even though these amounts are in here, they're not, they're not in an account anywhere, right? But these are just estimates.
It's a talking point to start the conversation.
When it comes to buildings, we need to talk about fire station, we need to talk about our public works facility, we need to talk about the gymnasium, those are probably the two or three big ones over the next two to five years.
Is there another sort of part of the budget in here?
It's the.
We'll end in twenty-five. That's also, you don't even.
We'll see under improvement.
House is built, yeah, they don't show us the group.
So the next, the next one is improvement.
Is that definitely moving forward?
Here's the, yeah, the pine here part. Blue is represents impact fee eligible.
Do that make sense, the blue is impact fee?
Yes.
So again, there, at this point in the budget, it's just a placeholder.
That's just a placeholder.
Because we put it off, I mean, and some of them, we we talked about last year, and we'll look next year and we might put it off again.
Okay.
Okay.
Next one is infrastructure.
It's eighteen seventeen.
John, you want to add sriracha one?
No, I want to get something.
There's some pizzas.
Yeah, I need an ananas.
Some tomatoes. Listen, when I try to.
No, because I'm a little lousy.
I don't like.
Plus, there's no random.
This slide right here is the one that you'll you'll see on February first, at the time we meet with Josh. We're gonna talk about all this.
Okay.
Yeah, the big one, yeah, four and a half, I think that number is actually quite a bit more now.
Yeah, I think Josh is saying it's probably doubled.
We have no.
Doubled?
Chris would probably use. Those are the kind of things. Because they've gotten into it, they've gotten into it and they've seen how bad it is.
Some of this can be part of third quarter county ask money too, right? And there's grants and this is just an overall.
Right, right. We're showing expenditures, not the revenue sources.
We'll take, we'll we'll take the the West and Mutton Hollow or whatever, we'll take them if you guys pay for the water.
Great question, I think this can be answered more specifically later on, but these are very specific projects, is there any like miscellaneous like pots that we're putting money into for resurfacing and striping and?
Oh, yeah.
I've had so many people.
Yeah, this is, this is a capitalization, there's also an operations.
So that's a different.
Yeah, and it's under the operations, so for example, we do that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for crack seal.
Yeah, there's ongoing maintenance for the, yeah, the ceiling and.
And in our intent, when we meet again, is to, is to do that very thing, maybe is to have infrastructure, but also have maintenance and then put revenue with it and see where the gap is. That makes.
That makes sense, because that's something that's very important to me, that I'm looking more closely at.
I always appreciate you bringing that up, Nate, I think it's important, you you bring like kind of those things up, I think it's good.
Because no one else has to, because you do.
So this is all the non-power infrastructure, so this is specifically power.
You get a couple bits? Maybe you put it back out.
And then equipment, this is kind of small items, but. Here's that number. Let's see, yeah, so, then to your question about the fleet, this is what we budgeted, so.
My phase is at twenty?
Twenty. So overall, it's one point two million. But it's spread across all these different funds.
Okay. And as we do the twenty-five budget, we'll we'll update. Yeah, so what, yeah, what's the twenty-four was what we actually budgeted, what you have in twenty-five is potential projections.
Yeah.
That's what we're right now. Okay.
Oh, so we're we're projected two hundred and nine thousand, not two hundred and eighty thousand.
We. Two oh nine is we already budgeted. We didn't make a change here, we we couldn't get the Derek truck that we wanted, so we, Brian went ahead and bought, I think, four pickups instead. So we kind of, so instead of the pickups being future years, we'll kind of move that around. We still need a Derek truck though, right? Yeah.
Right, that's the one that they they won't service anymore, because it's there, it's not safe.
Like a ninety-five, I think I remember that from.
Twenty. In regards to the operations for fiscal year twenty-five, we we don't have a lot to offer, because we haven't seen what the departments have asked for. We do know that they're they're making some inflation increases, we'll have to look at. Dispatch services is one that we thought we'd have to, by the way, and have a pretty big hit there. It looks like we probably will go the direction to Battleful. And the cost is very similar to what we're paying now, which is amazing news.
Which direction does Battleful go? Is it regional?
Well, everything from Kaysville south to go to Battleful.
Go to Battleful, oh, that's okay.
That probably isn't gonna happen until first of January twenty-five.
Okay.
So that that was good news, because we were wondering how we were gonna pay for.
Yeah, it was so expensive.
Battleful already had a dispatch.
Yeah, like seven hundred thousand.
Late night.
It's a dispatch, so it doesn't matter.
Eight versus. All right, sorry, I thought that's what we were, because you said you didn't want to do it.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Dean, keep going, keep going.
Software subscriptions, that is gonna be an ongoing battle, everything is going subscription-based software. We're a Microsoft shop and we're hearing that Microsoft licenses are gonna triple. So we're paying about thirty-five thousand now, it could be up to ninety. So that's just one of the things that we we know about.
They had to pay for his divorce.
Is that something we can look at? Are there old subscriptions that we're paying for that we're not using anymore that we can drop off?
No, because they're unsupported. It's all web-based supported.
So we're not paying for the subscriptions that we're not currently using, right?
Well.
Because it seems like there were ones that we've used, I mean, our old.
I'm gonna bring one thing off, is we have a program called My Meter, where people can log on and.
Oh, I remember that.
See their usage, and we're looking at that and saying, we have less, fewer than one percent of our users.
Never use, never get on.
I I remember when it was first.
Yeah, and it's twenty, twenty grand a year.
Oh.
So we're saying.
Everyone gets a mail, gets it in the mail, right?
Well, yeah, they can look at Express Bill pay to see their usage, they can't see it by hour.
More data, more, you know, if you want.
For that one percent of people.
Are there old prescriptions?
Stuff like that I won't believe.
That's one that we.
And is it something that maybe we need to have an audit?
Raise that.
Audit our accounts.
We we.
A subscription audit.
Oh, yeah, there's a new, there's a new accounting requirement, where you have to look at every software subscription and you have to, it's over a certain threshold or more than one year, then you have to amortize it, you know, over the life.
That was a big pain with this last audit, because it's a new requirement.
Is that to protect us from these companies from just going kind of rough like Microsoft?
It's to satisfy some accounting board, the things, they'll get better information. Subscription.
Good, so at least we'll know.
They just want to know.
I think that happens.
People rely on it.
I I think this new power thing that we got might, like you said, already takes care of it for five years.
More than what the meter thing used to be, so why keep paying, let's get rid of it.
Yeah, that's what I was. Those can be had, that's what I want to know. So there's none left, so none left to offer here, but.
That'll be more in the next.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, personnel. We just talk about how we adjust our compensation plan, so let's look at. So if you remember, we use the U R S number to kind of, as a benchmark, to adjust our compensation plan. You know, we hear a lot of it's a colon, I don't, I don't think it's a colon, I don't think it's automatic. What it is, it's a good benchmark to say, this is where we need to move in order to come up with with the market. So we've done a pretty good job of using that as our benchmark, last year, our benchmark was eight. And as the council met, they said, well, let's do six percent and let's reallocate two percent. And in a minute, you'll see what we're able to do with that, amazing, amazing.
So discretionary funds.
No, that was just the two percent that we used to bring up some of the people.
It wasn't across the board, it gave.
It was position-specific based on the announced position.
We haven't seen the twenty-four numbers yet, but we expect them in a day, so I I'm thinking it's gonna be three, three, two, four. And and it may be one of those things, even with that, we'd say, let's do one and a half percent across the board, let's target positions. It worked well last year.
It's your maintenance.
It's like two percent. Two percent.
Yeah, these two.
Yeah.
The next slide, maybe not so good news, health insurance. And you can see, this is pretty sizable cost to the city. You can see the increases, we've done pretty well, considering most people are in about six or seven percent per year, but we don't know what twenty-four looks like, we met with a broker this past week and the first three months of the year, we were turning about a hundred and seventeen percent over premium. So it's not going to be this number.
Our insurance went up as our company.
So.
Every year.
We still think we could poke them a little bit and do the best we can, but anyway. Okay, the next slide, we want to indicate what we were able to do with that.
Yeah, these are really. So these are the results of that study and and being Sam, I think, did a lot of really great things, so. The blue shows where we were at last year, so if you remember, what you're looking at is, you know, on the far left are people that were twenty percent plus below their average on comparison. And it's five percent increments up to, you know, above average. So you can see in the blue, last year, we we had some twenty plus, some fifteen to twenty, about sixteen, seventeen positions in that ten to fifteen below range. And because of what you did last year, you can see how it shifted.
There's nothing there now, that's awesome.
And if you remember, the goal was to get people within that five percent below range, and that's exactly what we did, all these, all these blue positions shifted up into this zero to five percent below, which is fantastic.
That's good.
So, yeah, thank you, everyone, I know that I've talked to a lot of employees that really just really appreciate what what you did last year.
And this is a good opportunity to, I think, I don't know if everyone saw my email on Friday about our city engineer. So he is the one employee, that's him right there, still in that ten percent or more below market average. Normally, I wouldn't even honestly think about coming to the council with the mid-year, you know, salary adjustment, I just think it's not a good idea, generally speaking, but I know when we hired our engineer two years ago, a little over two years ago, I'm told that they did six or seven interviews and we're just about ready to say, you know, we can't even fill a position, there's just, the talent pool is just not there. And then Dexter came along and he really wowed everybody and they hired him and he's been just a super valuable part of the team. So we were frankly just concerned about losing him, frankly, as an employee, a really good employee, but just looking at strictly financially for the city, we're concerned that if we go back out and have to fill that position again, that we wouldn't really be successful with the current, you know, with the current salary down here. So we're afraid that we'd have to still spend the money, and in the interim period, while we're waiting to fill that position, likely we'd be contracting an engineer, which is even more expensive than just filling it with a full-time person, so we think this is one of those rare times where it might be in the city's best interest just to go ahead and pull the trigger and consider not an immediate adjustment, but should Dexter, he's interviewing tomorrow at Summit County for this county engineer position, and that was at the encouragement of his former boss in Summit and his former coworkers. So we think he's got a good shot, and, you know, he's obviously worked there, so he knows what it's like, should he get an offer? Their starting salary is a hundred and twenty thousand, his current salary range tops out at a hundred and thirteen, so he's that seven thousand dollars below the the starting salary of this new position. I don't know if we'll be able to keep him or not, I, we know that he likes it here, he lives, I think he lives in Syracuse, so he's close. But the financial part of it is kind of a game changer for their family, so we're just trying to find a way, maybe just to to throw a few more dollars his way now to hopefully give him some food for thought to consider staying, we know it's kind of a difficult decision. But we also think that if we throw a few more dollars his way now, we're not gonna risk, you know, him going from, you know, here to here or something, we just wanna maybe throw enough to get him, you know, somewhere closer to where the rest of the employees are. So last year, when we did the salary study, I think, what was it, a hundred and twenty thousand was last year's market.
That was the average.
Average.
Yeah.
So market average last year was a hundred and twenty, we went, we brought him up to a hundred and thirteen thousand, which was a pretty good jump, but still not at the the market average at a hundred and twenty. This year, the preliminary numbers that Levi ran show that it's gone up, you know, several thousand more than a hundred and twenty, we're still kind of fine tuning that, but my my thought is that we might just bring him up, should he get the offer, an active offer, counter offer with a hundred and twenty, just to, you know, mid-year adjustment to bring him up to the the minimum, not only the minimum of the summit job, but, you know, where the, closer to where the average is market-wise.
About a fifteen, ten, fifteen percent, how much is it?
About a seven percent. Yeah, seven percent.
So he'd still be seven percent below.
Sorry. He would probably be in the zero, five, or even slightly.
I think he'd be in the five to ten.
Yeah.
I think he'll still be low, but yeah, probably in this group rather than than here.
Because that would be his max, whereas that would be starting up there.
Right.
Right.
He's not at his max right now.
He's he's basically at his max, he's like, you don't.
Yeah. So, I mean, with one area where I like this is that it's not like, it's not a position that's like gonna cost us, or, you know, when we look at, Mike and I always talk about like the gift that keeps on giving, right, it's the, but those are the jobs that maybe you're having to raise the salary and it's affecting ten employees, like this is one situation, like, and you think seven grand, seven grand amortized over the years, five hundred dollars, I mean.
Right, right, if there were five city engineers, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if there were a ton, it would make a difference, but like in this case, it's like seven grand for the course of the year, it does make sense to keep.
And even if there were, you know, other employees in this this range right here, it'd make it difficult, because how do you, so that's fair, but and this one, it just seems to just look like, okay, this this seems to make sense to retain a good employee, bring him up with, you know, more of his, you know, coworkers here, his peers.
Jason, if he decides to, even if we agree to do this, and he decides not to take it, do we still need to do this in order to hire? Jason, if he decides to, even if we agree to do this and he decides not to take it, do we still need to do this in order to hire someone to replace him?
I, yeah, I think that discussion will still need to happen. We'll have to maybe look at it, take a close look at that. See where we think it'd be appropriate, but my, my recommendation is tonight that if, if the council wants to talk about, of course, but that you consider just authorizing staff to, to counter offer, should he get an, an active offer, and go up to a hundred and twenty thousand.
I'd rather wait. I mean, I wanna see, I don't wanna just shoot from the hip today on a, on a supplement. I mean, I really. And the other thing I don't wanna do is I don't want to pull Dexter back. He's got an opportunity to.
Right, that's still a choice. He, he's made it clear that he actually wants to stay here, he's got quality of life issues, you know, his commute's ten, ten or fifteen minutes now, now, you know, Syracuse, Summit's an hour.
Well, and this is an. I also like to know what the other fifteen cities or fourteen cities in Davis County pay their city engineer.
Well, that, that's the, that's what you have right there is the analysis.
I, to me, I think it's a no-brainer. He's the only one in that category. And to give you the tools you need to help retain him. I mean, to a certain extent, we only can offer so much, but Dexter's great, we have some big projects going on.
Well, and my understanding is it wasn't as though he's going out saying, hey, you guys, I, I need another career, I need another job. They reached out to him and said, cause he used to work there. Um, hey, we've got this opportunity. So it's not as though he's trying to play us, is, is what I'm saying.
Additionally, I don't feel, and again, I don't, I kind of don't feel like, I hate to say hinges on him giving an offer, I kind of would like to. Yeah, to just say, hey, you know, we'll give this to regardless. I don't want him to feel like, oh, because maybe he'll just say, well, then I'm fine, I'm just gonna stay.
I, I think.
Unless you feel like that's more important.
I think regardless, we go through the process and figure out, fine tune, where is the right spot? And maybe it's, you know, maybe it's a little more than a hundred and twenty, like I said, Levi's numbers are showing that the, the market average is now well above a hundred and twenty thousand, last year was a hundred and twenty. Maybe, I think this year is a hundred and twenty-eight, is what we're seeing so far, is the market average.
That's the average.
He's a masters at all.
He's got a civil engineer, but I think he's the edge bachelor. But I, I guess our other thought here is, you know, he's interviewing tomorrow, we don't know how quickly that process is gonna unfold and should he get an offer, need to counter, I mean, we, we wanna have the flexibility to, to, if, if we want to retain him, to be able to do it pretty quickly if it comes to that. And if, if the council were to say, you know, we're okay with this, take a straw poll now, then we would obviously go, come back at a future board meeting the next one in February and, and formally ratify this, cause salaries do have to be approved by, by ordinance, so. But that's just kind of the situation, so.
Formally speaking, I think.
Yeah, we're good, or I'm good.
John, Mike?
I'm good, Mike's not good.
I know it's, it's, you know, it's difficult.
It wasn't.
It, it wasn't, it's just, again, it's one of these things that kind of popped on us, and again, I, I would never bring something up like this normally. In fact, honestly, in my twenty years in city management, this is, I think this might be the first time where I've kind of come to the board. This, just the circumstances of this just seem to say that I think it might be in our interest to try to do something in this case. So I, I appreciate the, the feedback and we'll let you know how things go.
Again, thank you, we think we made great progress. I would love to see everyone zero to five percent above average, but it's not going overnight. Made huge, huge steps. So thank you again.
The problem with having everybody be at zero to five is that you, that would require there to be, like if all cities did that, then there would be no quote-unquote average. Having an average is okay, I mean, it's not like the best, but.
I guess the point is, we're not like shooting for, for the top paying.
Right.
It's the average.
Yeah, we just wanna shoot.
And I just did a little thing where I like, there's three hundred and sixty-some cities in, in Utah, we're the thirty-three biggest city, I believe. And I would say a good rule of thumb for me would be to go from thirty-three to twenty-five and thirty-three to thirty-seven. Take the average of those cities that are absolutely in our same population pretty close and look at what their total budgets are and the ones that are way up there because they may have some, you throw those out and then you take the average of those employees. That to me is a really good, solid. We, we have thrown out outliers. If you'd like to.
For example, we looked at Lehigh and we threw anything from Journeyman and above out of our survey. We could rethink Journeyman compared, but we didn't do Human Resources or Operations Management.
Then I just have a way that I can say, look, there, we took the top twenty-five to the top thirty-seven cities, we were thirty-three. We took the average salaries of all of them, we don't wanna pay the highest, we don't wanna pay the lowest. We even took out a few cities that were included last year as we discussed with Jason, we thought, you know, these probably shouldn't, we took them out.
Took out South Door and Draper. There's absolutely a difference in living in Davis County or living, so. Yeah, the bulk of it's Davis County that we threw in, other cities are very similar, like Springville, American Ford, Spanish Ford.
That's what I say, you take those cities I'm talking about, you can see their population.
I think it was about thirty, thirty-five.
Maybe, maybe just to wrap, wrap this up. This, you saw last year, this is our, our position staffing. And we, we had several departments suggest that they would like to add staffing. We didn't add any staffing last year to make it better work. This is probably an editorial that I it's gonna be difficult again to add staffing. We're not seeing huge revenue.
We're not seeing huge growth either.
Anyway, all, all we've done is said, you know, this is what departments, you know, thought they needed last year. I, I think you'll see similar requests, but just to make you aware of that.
If you look at the total, it was eleven positions last year. And then also another three kind of earmarked for this year. That's what they were requesting.
Didn't we actually add positions last year? Yeah, we had some positions last year.
Last year.
I don't think we did last year, I thought we said there was a higher.
I think we had a cemetery lead worker.
Yeah.
Yeah, we added a couple.
Was that one that was already in that we just finally hired someone for?
Substation.
Substation guy was. And what did we do as far as we called the parameters? Cover the parameters or did we get that done?
Okay, that I think is all we have for today. The last slide is if, you know, be thinking about where your priorities are, where your objectives are, what direction you wanna give us. We'll meet again first week in February and talk about capital infrastructure and pick of the sheep.
She will send out invites to all these.
Super wrestler. All of them.
There was some app that.
No more talking about business.